Planning Commission hearing for January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. We will start our meeting tonight with the pledge of allegiance and Mr. Whitlock is going to leave that for us. Thank you. Okay, we'll have a roll call. We'll start with Mr. Whitlock. Tell us your name and if you have any conflicts with tonight's agenda items.
Jeff Whitlock, no conflicts.
Raleen Wallin, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Melissa Kendall, no conflicts.
Andrew South, no conflicts.
Okay, both of our items tonight are from the same applicant, and so I think we'll probably hear them together. I'm going to read both of them in separately and we'll vote on both of them separately, but well, since the presentation is overlapping, we'll hear them together. Okay, item number one is a legislative item, which means that we're just making a recommendation to the city council for this request. The item is Steve Turley requests a zone change from the R one eight one-family residential zone to the MU mixed-use zone for approximately two acres of land located at twenty seventy-five West Center Street. This is in the Provo Bay neighborhood. And then item two is that Steve Turley requests concept plan approval for a mixed-use development with apartments and commercial use in a proposed MU mixed-use zone over two acres of land located at twenty seventy-five West Center Street in the Provo Bay neighborhood, Mr. Ardmore. For those who don't know, this is a staff member of the city. He will be presenting this, these items to us tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Plan Commission. So let me just go real quick to orient you with the location we're talking about tonight. Here is the intersection of Center Street and Geneva and twenty fifty west. The property is highlighted in red box there, the Long Nero property. Current is currently zoned R one eight. You might remember that this has come before you before. It was back in March of two thousand and twenty-two with the plan on the screen right now is what was presented. So at that March ninth hearing, the applicant was was requesting a mix of four different zones on the property, as you see there, and then a concept plan to the right of that, showing what those zones would bring, commercial on the top, apartment building. Then down in the LDR area, they had townhomes, and then in the V LDR, they had twin homes. This application was reviewed by Planning Commission and continued. Staff and applicant were encouraged to find alternatives that address the major issues were addressing the intent of the area with the general plan and the southwest area future land use map. And also the sewer constraints with the general plan policy of the four units gross per acre in all the residential zones on the side of the freeway. So that's just a refresher. It's been a while. The applicant's been working towards a revision, an alternative. That's what's before you tonight. So what's before you tonight is a split of two zones. The mixed use on the north two acres and then leaving the remaining acres to the south R one eight, so not amending that zone at all. What you have on this slide is the the general plan. Maybe I should, I should backtrack and say the reason this is before you again. Kind of so quickly, we didn't, we didn't have study sessions on it like, like we had talked about in the March meeting. The applicants expressed a desire to be heard by the Plan Commission and City Council to have a decision on the item. So, so we were inclined to put on the agenda and, and follow this process. But going back to these slides, the general plan here, you can see on the, on the left side has the general plan overlay and has the southwest future land use map overlay. So you could see in the top acre of this property that we're talking about has in the future land use map, commercial or mixed use. So that's that. And then further south, it's all residential. And this general plan, future land use map would indicate that's four units per acre gross. What I've done here, so you could kind of have some context, is overlay the current request with this general plan map. You can see where that line draws. And this is significant because a lot of the analysis and summary reflects that, that difference in line. Where the general land use map, the future land use map in the line here for commercial mixed use, the applicant is proposing to bring it down another acre, essentially doubling the amount of, of mixed use property in the area. So let me go further into the site plan. So the site plan indicates that same thing. You kind of get a doubling of units of what the general plan was, was expecting at this location. You've got your commercial on the ground floor of the north building with two floors of units above, and then you've got a three-story apartment building and a separate building to the south. You'll notice that the, there's a connection to one thirty south. That's a, a significant improvement that relates to the the, the local street plan for the city to make those connections every five hundred feet for block lengths. As you will note in your concept plan, or sorry, in your staff report, the concept plan does have some issues remaining. Some of those issues are related to kind of confusing or contradictory information within the applicant's submittals. I've indicated those in your staff report specifically whether there are sixty units proposed here as is indicated by this plan or the seventy units as indicated by the floor plan. So that, that is something that would still have to be worked out. The elevations. You can see this rooftop amenity on this, this site plan right here. If you compare that to the elevations, again, Steph was a little confused that the north building shows a a roof style that wouldn't allow such a rooftop amenity to, to take the whole roof line. So there's things like that that are just kind of confusing things that could most likely be, be worked out with revised plans. However, there's, there's additional things that would have to be shown for the staff to feel confident that this even meets the zone that's being requested with the design corridor standards, parking lot landscaping standards, residential and transitional development standards on the city code reflected in your staff report. One of the other major issues that Steph had, other than this not matching up with the general plan is the, the parking provided. Is you notice on page two of your staff report, the third paragraph or the fourth paragraph down. The, the residential units alone at sixty units would would require eighty-four residential stalls and ninety-seven for the seventy units. So that would just leave nineteen stalls for the commercial use, which would be about one stall for every five hundred thirty-one square feet of commercial space. Now there are some commercial uses that, that fit that ratio for sure. What staff would most likely want at this location are, are retail, restaurant kind of neighborhood amenity, commercial uses that are more at a two, one stall per two hundred square feet. So there's a concern with parking. Note that the mixed-use zone does give a seventy-five percent standard, so you get a automatic twenty-five percent reduction in the mixed-use zone. So that's, that's all this property that you're seeing here. There's, there's a little bit of background on this now. Steph is, is a little hesitant with this standard reduction. As you may recall, a lot of multifamily has been built on South State Street over the past couple of years that have come before you. A lot of apartments, condos, townhomes and such on South State Street, if you recall. We've, we've kept an eye, we've had parking enforcement keep an eye on those parking standards. They've, a lot of those have received the, the transportation development management parking reductions. So we've, we've kind of wanted to see how that's reflected in the area. And even though the developers had the best intentions with those, there has been spillover. Thirteen ninety south completely packed with cars on the street. When, when the developers indicated that the, the projects could handle all the off-street parking. So there is some concern here in this particular spot to apply that mixed-use zone that has automatic twenty-five percent reduction. Because the spillover would definitely, on South State Street, there's not a lot of neighborhoods that the spillover affects, right? You're between the railroad tracks and State Street. Here, there's, there's neighborhoods to every direction that the spillover would, would maybe be a, a negative impact. So on top of that, the, the applicants are asking for a parking reduction when the, the mixed-use zone already gives you a twenty-five percent. So that's a, that's a concern of Steph as well. And as a housing type as a whole, as you've seen us come before you, we've, we've recommended approval, we've advocated for mixed housing types, right? The middle, missing middle housing types, smaller apartment buildings, twin homes, things like that. If you looked at the page three of the staff report, we've received a lot of those over the past several years, a lot more of those than single-family homes. And I think location is really important with that. I think if you go back to the general plan map, having one acre of that in this intersection could be a benefit to the neighborhood, could make sense. It's not the most walkable neighborhood, right? There's sidewalks that aren't connected. There's a bus that goes through there once an hour. So it's not like downtown. It's not like down by the commuter station. It's not like around campus. So there's, there's different things to, to keep in mind as you, we look at housing types and where they fit. That's all to say that Steph's not comfortable recommending approval on this stuff, on this rezon request. Nor on the concept plan. Let me check my notes to see if I've covered everything I wanted to say. Oh, yes, there was an alternative plan. I think that's an important thing to, to show you. As in March, you directed the applicant to, to come up with some different possible scenarios that could work. There was another scenario that came through staff review. So this came in as a application, was reviewed by CRC and approved. This is standard R one eight subdivision, has access easement on the back of the lots for accessing parking in the garages, which allows twenty fifty to be a true collector and not have the, the driveways. You'd have front-facing homes with rear, rear lot access. This meets the zone. This meets the zone already. He could, the applicant could apply for a subdivision on this tomorrow and, and have it go through the approval and, and get it recorded and, and start selling those lots. Staff is comfortable with this idea. I think this is more in line, yes, it's missing the commercial at the corner. But overall, this is more in line with, with the general plan is, is arguing for. So I think that's an important thing to consider. I believe that's all I have. Just reference my staff report for, for further detail, but if you have any questions, I'd, I'd be happy to answer those.
Mr. Gonzalez, do you have a question?
Yeah, what's the building height limitation in the community MU?
Let me pull that up real quick. I thought you might ask questions about the MU, which is a pretty new zone, so I'm not as familiar with it as the others. Minimum number of building stories is two stories, maximum number of five stories. Maximum first story height, twenty feet, floor is ceiling. So you can imagine maximum five stories with a twenty-foot ground floor. You could have twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty foot, sixty-five foot building.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I just had a question about the road, the neighbors in the neighborhood letter.
Knew that would come up.
You said, you showed it on a map, but if you could just address what the plans were in the master transportation plan, then we would know whether that's really an issue.
That's great. A great question. So one thirty south, as the applicant shows coming in, where did my panel, there you go. In their project right here, they show that coming in. You can see that one thirty south has already been stubbed west and east from this subdivision on twenty-one twenty west. It's also been stubbed over here off of twenty-three seventy west. So the plan is to have that connect through to create that connectivity. And then again, a north-south connection for that connectivity to create these five hundred foot blocks. That's, that's per engineering code. So that's the, that's the plan.
So the concerns that they could go through the neighborhood would only be temporary concerns because once that stub goes to the west, it would go all the way across.
So yeah, so this development would take it this far. So then you'd have these, this property owner and these property owners waiting on them to actually complete the road connection.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Turley, are you going to present or is someone presenting for you? Okay, it's your turn.
Thank you. I really tried not to make a mess here. Host disabled participant screen sharing. What am I doing wrong? Yeah, I've got a presentation. Can I share my screen? Oh, may I do that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just thought you had to get that to no beforehand.
It's an interactive, sorry. It's a
As long as it's not feature length, we would love to hear it.
It is not feature length, I promise. Here we go. It's good. Thank you.
While you're getting that set up, I would love for your presentation to help us understand the number of units and the number of parking spaces, the issues that Mr. Ardmore said he didn't understand or didn't have the information for.
Yeah, and also the rooftop.
The rooftop amenities.
Sure. Think we're good. I apologize. You figure that out, and I will get started. I appreciate your time. You, you, many of you were available when we had our March meeting with you last year. And you, you, you gave us some pretty clear instructions and, and so we wanted to follow those instructions. But it was an interesting time in the city with general plans being revised, with neighborhood plans being adopted, with mixed-use zones also being created and adopted. And our, we did our really, our, our, our very best to try to understand in an environment that was, that was moving a little bit as to, as to the instructions to follow. Let me, let me just share with you the, the, some of the comments that we were given at the last planning commission meeting, which I think are, are pretty instructive. The one that, the one that we got from the chair at the time. Her comment was two acres on the north, she said, perfect location for higher density housing on top of commercial. And then the two commissioners following that said, I agree, and the second said, or the third said, I agree as well. Let me just read a couple of these comments, because these were the cues that we took as, as, as we started to, to carry on down this road to, to respond to your, to your requests. What you're proposing for the two acres on the north, it seems like the perfect location for that kind of thing, and certainly having higher density housing. If it were on top of the commercial, it would be fine. Another commissioner, we would feel comfortable with the mixed-use village center commercial general plan designation being rezoned in an area that was larger than the bubble shown on the map, because it meets the intent, which is to provide something useful in that commercial node. We actually wanted the mixed-use commercial center area to be something useful to the community, so allowing the rezone to go further than what was, than what the bubble showed would be, in my mind, meet that requirement. Of course, followed up with the, I support what that good commissioner just said, just recommended. And then finally, we, I agree with Commissioner Jensen. It makes sense, it makes more sense to clean things up on the zoning, but to stick strictly to the general plan, just because something is not quite within the bubble, doesn't quite make sense. So as we, as we started to, to move forward with this mixed-use zone, there wasn't a mixed-use zone. You'll, you'll, if if you'll recall the conversation from last time, it was about the using the campus mixed-use zone, which this isn't near the campus, and yet the intent was somewhat the same, to have a mixed-use node. And so we waited patiently as the city kind of wrestled through and, and many of you wrestled through that, that creating that mixed use zone, which was, which was tough. And, and at the approval of that or at the adoption of that mixed use zone, both here and at the, at the council level, this project was brought up as a perfect location for the mixed use zone. As the southwest area plan was adopted, the language facilitated this being developed. And we think as, as, as we proposed. And then finally, the, the general plan that's still being, that still has yet to be adopted, that too is, we've tried to comply and we think we have with that. I just want to, I just want to note that as we, as we, as you start spending money on this stuff, which is our responsibility, we start spending money to, to, to draw up certain things, not only site plan work, but then also architectural work. And then things change and so we have to change them again and then the cities, the, the city becomes wiser and so we, we continue to change those things again. And, and I apologize and I'll say that right off the bat. We, we tasked our architect with, with coming up with a, with a project that fit this zone and fit this area. And there are no density requirements and so when this good architect went to work on this, on this thing, he was able to come up with a concept of 70 units with the 10,000 square feet. Let me back up half a step. The number one requirement in this, in this mixed use zone is that there's 10,000 feet of, of commercial space. And so before anything else happens, we have to put 10,000 square feet on the main floor and then be prepared to park it. And so anything after that, it just, it just increases the intensity of what's, of what's on the site. But it's the, it's what we want. And so the first threshold that we were given was the 10,000 square feet and the next threshold was the 30 units per acre for the residential on top of that, which we thought from the, the, the suggestions that we got, the advice that we got, is that was what the appetite was and the desire was. Well, well, when the architect took a look at the parking ratios, we got a traffic study. Unfortunately, he put a, a project together that had 70 units. And I'll, I'll say right off the bat, our bad. It was, it was a, at this concept plan, we didn't think it was fatal, but we, but we shared that 70 unit concept with staff and it ended up in the staff report. But I'd like to talk about that for a minute and if I can go to this next one. You'll, you'll see that, you'll see the building at the top. And, and, and this was, this was a, this was highly controversial amongst, amongst our, our people. The, the concept of the top are the two buildings if you're on Geneva Road. So the right side of the, of the top two buildings, the right side is, is where Geneva Road and Center Street connect. As you, as you continue to the south or to the left in this, in this presentation, you're going and you'll see those full glass windows along the bottom. That's your, that's your commercial space where the door fronts against the sidewalk. We hope to have patio furniture, we hope to have that kind of interactive in this, in this desired walkable community. We want that to happen there. And so, so oriented towards the sidewalk, oriented towards the street. And as you go from, from right to left on this presentation, again, we're talking about the top drawing. As you go from Center Street down further to the 130 South, you have that separation between the two buildings, which is a driveway allowing you to the parking to the rear. But all those buildings are pulled out towards the frontage. And as it continues to the south, you see that second building that is, that is only residential to the south. And, and the massing of that is, is three stories to the north, three stories to the south. And that's 70 units. And our traffic engineer, our parking engineer was comfortable and confident that that could be parked at 70 units. We, we unfortunately had to make a difficult decision and that's, do we redraw this thing after he gave it to us and spent a lot of money? Or do we back off a little bit and just explain while we're here that this was just a concept? So let me drop you down to the second level. This is the same footprint. This second level or this second drawing down is the same footprint. So on the right is Geneva Road or is on Center Street and left is 130 South. The same, the same building footprint and yet you'll see that the building to the south has a two-story presentation rather than the full three-story presentation and that's 60 units. And if, and if in the, in the, in the wisdom of planning commissioners, if you guys were to say, no, I, I want the other one, I want to go down to the third level and I want the second story building to be masked closer out towards Center Street, then, then that could work too. The, the, the lower two levels here is the same amount of units, it's just a different presentation. There's wisdom in, in both ways, we've, we've kind of gone back and forth about it. You're going to have more intensity in the commercial, so this is the stuff towards Center Street. You're going to have more intensity on that, on that north side. And so is that where you put less units so that there isn't so much of a, of a struggle to, to find parking if there is such a thing? And so I, I, I hope that you understand in the, in the concept phase of things, these, these are, these are important questions, but they're not the paramount questions as to, as to pass or fail or, or do or die on those. So the top level is what you've seen and what the count, or is what the staff has reviewed, 70 units. We're not doing 70 units, we're at 60. And so as you drop your eyes down to the middle level or the bottom level, that's 60 units. And if, and if this, if this commission were to say, we really love the second one, then that is, that six is for us, that's even. Now let me, let me also tell you that, that we have, we've consulted with, with some of the, some really, some really smart people. And you know what? Some thought it was ugly, some thought our building was ugly. And, and so this was another building presentation that was, that was proposed. It had a little bit more of the old time feel, a little bit more of the downtown Provo kind of feel. And while the, I don't think the pitcher does it justice, those are, that brickwork is intended to replicate some of the, some of the downtown architecture, some of those facades down there, the look a little bit old world. And I, and I appreciate the, the conversation we had here last time where, where some of you were, were pretty passionate that, that you wanted this to be a mini downtown. That you wanted this to be a, a kind of a replication of, of what was downtown, but, but further out west and maybe a little smaller node. And I'll, and I'll see if I can get that to go up. You'll also see the, the, on that top drawing, well, on all three drawings, on the right side or on that, on that facade that presents itself on the corner of Center Street and Geneva Road, that's a pretty prominent corner. Everybody that goes home on Center Street is gonna, is gonna see that corner. And so we thought it'd be really cool to put a clock tower in there, just like sits on the night building on the corner of Center Street and, and University Avenue. We thought that that would be a nice feature and then, and then it ran afoul of the sign ordinance that, that is part of the mixed use zone. And so we didn't, we didn't fully develop that. But I think that that would be an identifying feature that could probably help on the, on the west side. Again, our, our, our other drawing and all, another alternative, all this can be two-story, all this can be three-story, all this can can take the cues from whatever you guys would share. This is the, I, I, I put this in here, this is that, this is that concept, the, the second one. Where you'll see on the, on this, these are all the building elevations, east, west, north, south. And that, that, on the second level down on the far right, you can see that corner that would be prominently presented against Center Street and Geneva Road. And that's where we wanted to put the clock tower. So if somebody really wants a clock tower, I do too. Let me, let me talk about parking really quick. Having covered Commissioner Jensen, the, the discussion as to the, as to the units. I, I, I want to be clear, we didn't present 70 and so all the calculations that we, that we came up with, they weren't based on 70, they were based on 60. So we went to the, the same traffic engineer the Provo City uses. So, so this is no, no one's playing any games here, no one's, no one's paying for a, for a an engineer to, to come up with our answer. This was, this is Provo City's engineer, Hell's Engineering and they, they provided us this parking study, which, which if I can, if I can walk you through it, that top line is 116, that red dash line that's static is, is our parking onsite. There's 116 stalls. If you look down through the, the different variable parking amounts during, during midnight, there's no what, there's no car there for the commercial use. And no one's there until, you know, 7:00 AM when it starts to pick up. But as you also start to, to see the, the green, the blue lines dip, that's when people that spent the night there get up and go to work. And so they leave that area. But the black line is the most important and that's the total, and that's the total parking demand onsite. And so if you, if you add up all the retail, all the studio, one bedrooms, the two bedrooms and three bedrooms, you, you, you get yourself up into that black line, which maxes out at 96. 96 units or 96 parking stalls are needed on that site and we provide 116. So again, the same engineering company that is trusted by Provo City to come up with their parking plan, came up with this parking plan, which says that we are overparked on this site by 20%. So I, I kind of want to emphasize that, that, that there is a, there's a, that there's a magical number out there and it's in our code book and it says that this is a safe number to be at and, and et cetera. Mr. Ardmore brings up some of the development that's gone all on, on along South State Street and in, with the multifamily down there. My business is down there and every day I look out across the parking lot of the, of the units that were built on, on 1500 South. And there is a, there is a, an area of that parking lot that has 42 parking stalls that has only had one parking parking stall used ever. That place has been in, in there almost two years now. And so, so I, I would, I would, I would, I would welcome a, a, a good solid look at that if that's a problem. But this, but this, for our purposes, this parking study showed that we have overparked this place by 20%. And, and again, if, if you don't believe, if you don't believe us, then I, I guess in the same way you could not believe our own, the city's own parking studies, it's done by the same guys. So, so here's the, here's the parking study and at the bottom right, you can see that, that if only based off Provo City's parking ratios, they put that at 125 and in the code, in the mixed use zone, it says that the parking, that parking amount can be modified by the planning commission to allow for shared use parking, which is what we asked for. And we still believe that's 20% more than the site needs. I'm going to come back to this one. But I, I I want to talk about that boundary that we've talked about, the, or that Mr. Ardmore talked about, that, that little bubble. Could you, could you show me how to work that to get? You know, we're not going to do that because that'll be, that'll be a little tough to get back in there. You saw the bubble, there's a bubble that, that kind of, that kind of swings through the property. Don't tell the neighbors that have their houses that are built within the last 20 years because the bubble sweeps through their properties too. And so if we're really going to be hard, if we're going to draw a, a hard line with that bubble, we're going to draw that through four houses that have been constructed within the last, within the last 20 years. I don't think that's the city's expectation, nor do I think it's, it's fair to say that that hard line bubble that's been drawn is is actually the, the only place that that multifamily can go. If you look 600 feet to the south, there's no designation there. And so I think it's a false expectation to say that those boundaries are hard on one side, but on the other side, they, they can, they can swing 600 feet to the north. If I it takes a minute to get there. And so, so as we, as we start, as we started walking through this, this discussion about the, the flexibility of that, of that, it's written all over that that, that, and, and the representations that have been made for the, to the planning commission, to the city council, is that, and I'll read a few, the boundaries of the illustrated map, the illustrated land uses should be viewed as flexible and not hard boundaries in order to allow creativity in the layout and the development of the site. On the map, you'll see acreages associated with the different land uses. The point on that is that in creating these different land use areas, we did not try to follow property boundaries. There's a certain amount of ebb and flow and we expect to go with this. So as development applications come in, it's expected that there's going to be some give and take on the boundaries of those areas. And so I, I don't think that it's fair to, to say that that boundary that you see, that blob that you see on that map in front of you is, is a hard and fast boundary. The, the, the boundary that's there was arbitrary and, and, and everybody acknowledges that it's a blob. It was meant to kind of suggest that that's where we are, that's to expect those certain uses. And then following the lead that we got from, from this body last time was, was that, that the north two acres are totally fine to deal with. Is it going to let us zoom in or switch presentation around? I'll speak to the, the rooftop amenity while that's queuing up. I got to tell you, I, I've had some experience doing some urban development and redevelopment and, and I'm always, I spent almost 15 years as a, as a roofing contractor all of the United States and we would go from rooftop patio and rooftop garden to, to on and on and on. These are, these are amenities that, that, I'm sorry, these are underutilized spaces that can be utilized for fire pits, for barbecues, for patios, for, for common space. And, and I'll tell you that, that, that the urban communities that I've, that I, that I had the opportunity to work in, they, they do these very, very well. I don't know if you've been up to the conference center at, in Salt Lake or if you've been at the BYU campus, they're utilizing these roofs more and more because it's the same rooftop waterproofing membrane that's used with pavers on top. You have the opportunity to, to use that as space to enjoy some time outside, some, some open airspace, et cetera. Can you get me to the Google Earth?
I think we all understand what you were trying to demonstrate with the bubble not being firm, is that what you're still waiting on?
Can you pass it on? I'll be quick on this, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll be thorough on this because I think it's important. We have, the, the appendix J has been adopted for the southwest area future land use map. You'll, 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 you'll recognize the, that map as, as something that's, that was, that was the one that had the bubbles on it. So I'm referring to this map right here. And, and I, and I, and I, I need you to, to spend a minute with me on this because of the, because I think it's, I, I think it's important as far as representations that are made by the city and then also understanding. I think what Mr. Ardmore and the city's trying to articulate. So this is a Google Earth image on your screen. It's a Google Earth image that allows me to go through here and, and share with you. Number one, our project, our project's in the middle, the building to the north, the building to the south. And, and I, I want to hit these land use designations quickly. If I were to go, if you'll notice on those drawings, that brown area that's, that's the MDR, it talks about 36 units. And so I'm going to, I'm going to go over there and I'm going to, and I'm going to go, I'm going to go inch by inch, I'm going to go boundary by boundary on, on this thing here so that I can designate what is said to be, and you'll see on the, on the drawing that the, that the, that's been adopted, that that's supposed to be 36 acres. And if you go, if, 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 and I went, I went property by property, boundary by boundary and you'll see on the screen that if we measure this, that area is exactly 36 acres. And so, okay, fine. So I'm going to put on that, that this is 36 acres. This area here to the north is the, is designated on that drawing, you'll see is a park. It's, it's supposed to be four acres and it is. This area here is the, is the existing park, it's supposed to be 13 acres and it is. But when, but when this has been represented to this, to you, to the council, the staff has always said that, that they're looking for the undeveloped acreage because as they figure these new connections for sewer and they figure these new connections for water, they're looking for the undeveloped land. The developed stuff is already using sewer and water. The undeveloped stuff is the stuff that we have to accommodate for when it comes to this new growth. So let me, let me go to this area that is south and west of our parcel and, and show you, if we go to this one right here, this is, this is, this is what is labeled as on your drawing, you can see that it says res and it says 45 acres. Well, when I, when I capture all 45 acres or I'm sorry, all undeveloped area in this, there's actually 49, 49 and a half actually to, to be exact. And, and, and I couldn't understand the discrepancy there and I tried to figure out why and I tried to figure out why. And, 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 and I couldn't understand the discrepancy there and I tried to figure out why and I tried to figure out why. And then, and then I, I, I'll propose that, that perhaps this area needs to be drawn back. It needs to be made smaller because if the city's had an expectation that this is forty-five acres, it's actually forty-five point nine. There's something askew in the math unless you, unless you talk to, um, the owners of this piece right up here, um, on the north and the, uh, and the west portion of the property. That's owned by the Catholic Church. We have contacted them about their property ownership and they said that's going to be a great place for a Catholic church someday. Uh, there, there, there is no appetite for, for converting to a different use. And it low and behold is exactly four point five acres. And it might make up the difference between the forty-nine and a half acres and the forty-five acres that the city represented. I want you to know that, that we're not, we're not enemies of, of, of single family homes. Uh, we're, um, this parcel that sets, um, uh, where the, where the cursor is right now. We, we've got an application in for, um, for a single family home subdivision there. We intend to be the builders of the road that goes from the north to the south, to that one thirty south. And, uh, and, and so we're, we're team players. But this is, this is important and it's, it's, we're getting close to my last point. So I'm sure you guys are going to be really happy to hear that. Um, we're left with what's in the middle. What's in the middle on this, on this appendix J is the, the, the designation for that village commercial or village center commercial, this mixed use area that's, that's, uh, um, I think there's a misunderstanding about. Um, if I were to click on that area right there, the one that you've discussed of all the undeveloped properties. So that's a hundred percent of the undeveloped properties in that, in that village center commercial mixed use. Um, that area there, as you can see, um, uh, uh, does not include the seven-eleven, fully developed parcel, doesn't include the family develop, uh, dollar fully developed parcel. It doesn't include the, um, the piercing cabinets to the north and the, and the west, um, a fully developed parcel. So those are the undeveloped parcels in there. And you'll also see that, that I've, that I've given myself credit, if you will, for the second acre to the south on that, on that, um, on, on our parcel. Um, because I think that it'll, it, it might be a surprise to you and I, I'd, I'd be very interested to hear what the staff has to say because that area that you see right there in red is supposed to be twenty-two acres. It's supposed to be twenty-two acres. That's the allocation that they've given at thirty units to the acre. Um, and yet that red area there represents nineteen, nineteen acres, nineteen point two acres. And, uh, and if, and, and I, I, um, the measurement on those parcels, I'm sorry, nineteen point one, I didn't tell the truth, nineteen point one acres, uh, i- i- is that parcel there? So where's the other three? Where's the other two point nine? And remember this nineteen acres, this nineteen point one acres, that includes my southern acre, that, that, that one that's so highly controversial. So we have nine, so like twenty-two acres allocated at sixty units an acre. We have nineteen point one that show up on the map and I couldn't figure it out. I mean, I can, I can try to, to, to figure out what's going on and I can add back in the, the, um, the seven-eleven and I can add back in the piercing cabinets at the top. But even if those areas were to be redeveloped, it's not new sewer connections, it's not new water connections, those are already connected. I, I, um, uh, I can add those two in and you know what, I get to twenty-two acres. And may, and maybe that's the answer, but the twenty-two acres includes our southern acre. So it includes the two acres that we're talking about here. I'm, I'm, um, I don't think I'm asking too much to say if the city has allocated twenty-two acres, then, then where are they? And if they're, if they're actually represented in, in what the map clearly shows you, and anybody can independently verify this information, um, that that's, that that twenty-two acres includes ours. Let me then just, is there any questions about this? Because this is kind of a, a key thing to understand, I think, what the city wants and, and what we want as well. Let me then, let me then, um, wrap up with two things. Um, one is our, uh, the discussion that was brought up about, um, the alternative concept plan that we, that we provided, which shows the single family lots. Um, I, I am, um, uh, Provo in the past has, um, lowered the floor on, on, on zoning. So right now we can put in, uh, uh, single family homes. I know that there have been areas and times in the past when the city has rezoned things to deny someone the ability to do what the, what the, what the zoning, um, a- allowed them to do. This was, this was RC zoning. If this, if, if the city wanted, uh, if the city wanted to, to make sure that this didn't end up going in the wrong direction, they could put it in RC zoning so nothing could happen on it except one single family home, which would deny the opportunity of, of, of doing any development on it. So sorry, we just wanted to make sure that the floor, um, didn't fall any lower than it, than it, than it could. And so we put in that subdivision. And if, and if unsuccessful, um, uh, we could make that applicant, or we could follow through with that, um, that subdivision and, uh, and, and, and put that thing in place. But, but if I did, I, I, I gotta say that, that I, I, I think that there would be some people in development services that would be grumpy at me. And they would say, and they would say, no, 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 you're violating our general plan because our general plan says we want mixed use in that area. And if I put those single family homes that were, that were shown by Mr. Ardmore up there and that I, I think there'd be some people in this body that would say, darn it, that was, that's a key corner in, in, in West Provo and we don't want it to see it being a single family home. We wanted to be some mixed use that'll support the, uh, the, the, the walkable community that's anticipated out there. I, I, um, I, I'm pretty passionate about this. I think that we can do the right thing. I think that in years past, uh, some opportunities have been missed out there in, in, in search of the perfect instead of just the really darn good. And, uh, and as I, as I went out there a couple of days ago to take some pictures, I, I, I drove into the, uh, to the seven-eleven, little, or a little hungry, wanted to grab myself a burger there at Wendy's. And you know what? It's out of business. How is it that, that the only other food establishment on the west side? I mean, there's, there's the Great Steak Grill, there's, there, there, there's Subway sandwiches and there's Wendy's. Wendy's never goes out of business anywhere and they're going out of business. I mean, I mean, this is our chance to move this place forward, to add density, to add people, to add this walkable community because right now it's backsliding. And I don't know how many more years we have to wait for something to happen there, but I'd like to take a step forward. So I'm, so I'm, I, I am very passionate about this. I own property out there, uh, that, that someday I hope to live in. And, uh, and it's on Center Street and it's, and it's, um, it's part of the west side that, that means a lot to everybody. But I'm not asking for anything that isn't already anticipated in the plan. I leave this up on the screen just to show you that we're not, we're not taking away from density. I mean, at the last meeting that, that, that was held, um, uh, Mr. Pepperoni said that we've got an extra couple hundred units, um, a- available for density. Um, the, this body changed the, the zoning on that property north of Center Street further out to the airport services zone and, um, and, uh, and, 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 and did away with seventy-four units, um, uh, creating or making that opportunity for additional density. We don't think we're asking for additional density. Anyway, as, as far as, um, uh, our opportunity here, the project works. You guys can decide if you want, if you want two stories on the south or two stories on the north. It, uh, as far as we're concerned, we're thrilled to do either. The parking works, our traffic engineer, um, Provost Traffic Engineer says that it works. And then finally, the zoning works. As far as that map that we've thrown out, we, we, we've shared with you, that was the anticipated, um, densities that were, that were asked for on that west side. So anyway, we happy to answer questions, but we hope you'll support, um, our opportunity and recommend approval of the council.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Whitlock?
Yeah, I had a quick question. Um, is, are these units intended to be for sale or for rent?
Um, you know what, I, I wanted to sell them and, uh, and, and, and very happy to do that. Don't have any expectation one way or the other, except for then I looked at the, the, the west side plan, uh, the, the, the west side neighborhood plan that said there's point zero zero two percent rentals on the west side. And, uh, uh, again, page fifteen, if you want to look at it, um, that was of concern to me. And if there was direction given by this body, I'm, I'm totally willing to go either direction. No appetite or no, no predisposi- treat us predisposition one way or the other.
Wh- where'd you read that from? That sounds really.
Should we look at it? I thought so too. I, I, I hope someone's wrong here, but I can give you the page.
I mean, that just, if that's in, in fact true, that just blows my mind with all anecdotal evidence.
Can I, can I tell you what? I, I will agree with you. Yeah, if you look on page twelve, it says comparing the tenure of southwest area to the rest of Provo, there's a higher rate of owner occupancy in the southwest area. Only point zero zero two percent of the homes are rented in comparison to a citywide rental occupancy of sixty-two point five percent.
At from the area you, southwest area.
That, that's from the southwest neighborhood plan. Uh huh.
It does say homes, so maybe that's the differentiation. It's not that there's no rentals over there, it's just that single family homes.
There's homes that are being rented out, correct?
I can speak to that. There's actually only like one apartment building in all of Southwest Provo. So it's really just that.
And, and, and I've got to believe that there's someone that's not, um, um, applying for the rental dwelling license because we know that there's homes, single family homes that surely would be rented. There's no way that that number, but that's, that's the number from your report.
And, and then I probably missed this, but there was the, the staff report called out the discrepancy in the number of units. Is this sixty units or seventy units? Can you just firmly?
Six, zero. And I apologize, um, uh, for the concept that was, uh, that was provided.
Did you get your question answered about the rooftop amenity, Mr. Gonzalez? I felt like you said you were going to make it look good, but how does that relate to what we're looking at on the, the elevations and what, what? Because if we're talking about approving or denying a concept plan, we would want to know exactly what you were envisioning there.
Yeah, if, if, uh, you recall the, the three tiered, uh, presentation that we had, um, Andrew's going to find it, but it was, um, but it's a, but it's a pitched roof. If you look at it from, from Geneva Road, it's a pitched roof. What you see is you see a pitched roof, except instead of it rising all the way to the, to the ridge line at the top, um, it, it rises and then drops into, it's called a well, but it will, but it'll have a wall five, four, five feet high, which then will be flat across the entire, um, uh, the entire roof of the building, which will have pavers, patio pavers and, um, and that's where the barbecue, fire pit, the club area would be. And it would all be on the roof and it would all be concealed behind a screen wall, um, that, that, um, uh, that from the street looks like a pitched roof.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Uh, yeah, what, what's to prevent you from building higher? Um, I, cause I, I vaguely remember this, hearing it over a year ago and, and, uh, I want to say I had a concern about, um, some open space amenity, amenities of opportunities available on the commercial or, or the mixed use area. Um, wh- what would, yeah, what, what's to prevent you from building up and, and thereby opening up some potential open space?
So you're talking about like going to a fourth floor, something like that?
Yeah, fourth or fifth floor. Like I, I asked, uh, Mr. Ardmore earlier and about building height maxes and he said it sounded about like sixty feet, five stories.
I hope you can appreciate, uh, uh, the, the kind of balancing act that, uh, that those of us on this side of the microphone have to do. Um, I think I would be shocked if, if, if we went, uh, above three stories. It just, there's, there's an element, uh, when, when Commissioner Jensen, uh, mentioned the campus mixed use last time at the last meeting. And then there was a discussion about heights and, uh, and someone said seven, s- seven stories was the max. And, uh, Commissioner Jensen, I know that you weren't suggesting seven. Um, but it, it, it just, I had, I had never even thought of, of, of going higher than that. And, uh, and we did actually, we flew a drone over, over West Provo, um, looking for, uh, for the heights of building. And while I think it's possible, um, uh, 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 structured parking is very expensive. We've got a four hundred and twenty-three unit, uh, a project we're doing right now. And it is, it is very, very expensive, um, and yet can be done. I, I, the height of the water table out there in this area, I don't believe would allow for us to go, um, uh, uh, below the building, uh, to do it, but, but a building could be built on top. Um, the mixed use, um, uh, development standards would make it very difficult because of how that has to be screened, how that parking has to be screened. Um, uh, I can tell you, there's, there's a, there's a, there's a, the, there's a, a, a war being waged right now about, about open space and, and where the best place to put open space is. You put it in the, in the side of a parking lot and, and, and dads and, and kids don't go out there and, and toss a ball around. You put it in a, in a confined space where they know, um, uh, like this rooftop amenity, where they know that their children are going to be in a confined area, um, and they would know who would, who would drift in and drift out. Um, one side of the argument says that that's the better way to go.
I just have one last question for you. Um, what makes you think that retail there that you are going to put in is going to do better than Wendy's? Like if, if something is killing Wendy's, then how do we, how do we ensure that this great idea becomes something great?
Yeah, Commissioner Jensen, that's a fabulous question. Um, number one, critical mass. I think that, I think that if we, that if we, if we water this down, if we water this down to, to, to thirty units, we, we, we don't get, we don't get there quite yet. Uh, at some point in the way, we get, we, we start to get across the tipping point. Um, we did a market study and, um, and there are local, um, the dentist office type things. They like to be in these kind of nodes. It's a smaller office. It allows for a, you draw a circle around, around who, uh, around the amount of rooftops in that area, their income levels, their service demands, they do not want to drive away. Look at, look at the study that was done for, for the general plan itself. And, and, and I can't remember the number, it was a huge number, I was surprised. But about how many people want to walk, or don't want to move more than five minutes towards, um, uh, some kind of food establishment, there's nothing on the west side. Well, I'm sorry, I don't want to, um, Subway and the Great Steak Grill are, are two options that all the westsiders have, but that's the only options that they have. Um, but there are a variety of types of businesses, um, uh, that absolutely thrive in this environment. And in the market study, it was, it was there. I'm concerned, I'll be really honest about the, um, uh, about the Wendy's going out of business. That's, that's got to be a stunner, that's got to be a gut check for all of us. Um, and yet at some point in the way, we're going to get there and I'd like to lead the way. I'd like to show confidence and if I have to wait and wait and wait for that retail to fill up, I have no choice, I have an option. It's not like I can undo the, the, the retail space that's put in there. Would like to try and if it doesn't end up being a, a, a class A plus, then we'll go with a class A and if it's not A, then we'll go A minus until such time as there is such a demand out there. And the village center is realized and all of a sudden we get, we get some of that good stuff that we want. We're willing to take the risk.
Thank you. All right. We would now like to invite, um, a neighborhood chair to speak to this item. Is it Ms. Bogdan?
Okay. Okay, Becky Bogdan, Provo, Utah. I want to start out by saying.
You have three minutes, by the way.
Okay, I can't remember if I was here in person or if I watched this online, but I did watch. You guys know I'm always at these things. Um, and we know that sometimes there's confusion with planning commission and what is actually on the west side map. We know that those numbers are fixed. Those blobs are not necessarily like they are in other parts of the city. And that was explained very, very directly to the representative that Mr. Turley had during that meeting. And it still holds true today. Those numbers are very fixed. And we all know that we have sewer limitations and other things that make those numbers what they are today. Um, Bill was telling me when we do the calculations, there are over two thousand attached units on this master plan already. And that is not including this extra acre that Mr. Turley is putting within this. That's a lot of units. We do not have public transportation. I know we do have the one bus that goes to the airport every great once in a while. It is not functionable for our residents. They don't use it because it doesn't go anywhere feasible. It's awful. We have Center Street, which is the worst interchange on the planet. There are so many wrecks there. I think that is one of the worst places. And so to add more traffic to a place where we only literally have, what? Six ways that we can cross under or over the freeway? That's just, it, there's, there's more things. The infrastructure just doesn't support additional units on the west side, which I think we all know that. Um, the Wendy's, it did go out of business. My westsiders are telling me it is too far away from the high school for high schoolers to come get lunch and go back. It just doesn't work. So additional food places like that, are they going to be supported on the west side? Probably not. Um, Smith is telling us that we need higher incomes on the west side for it to be feasible. Additional units there? I don't know that that's going to give us what we need. Um, we'll also talk about the parking. It's right up from the Fort Utah Park, which is terrible parking and everybody's all over the street. So to add, add additional parking, there is a huge concern. Um, one more thing, if I look at my notes, really quick. Owner occupancy. That was something that I discussed with Javid. I have more than that just in my ward, and I'm sure Mr. Knutson can tell you that there's more than that just in his ward. The thing that they were looking at was rental dwelling licenses. And I told them, I said, you know, that number is going to come back to bite us because we do have more on the west side. We just don't have people that are willing to get the rental dwelling license in order to do that. I have several more than that just within my street. Is there any questions you guys have for me?
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, do we have any neighbors that would like to speak to this item? We'll give you two minutes each. Tell us your name and where you live.
So my name is Samuel Lyons. I live on one nine seven South twenty zero, uh, twenty fifty West. So right on that Geneva, on the, we got the letter in the mail about the plan change. We were a little concerned just because like we like the trees on the side and all the birds I play through. But we see that that has been changed, so it's just the top half, which is where a lot of truckers go into park. The couple of concerns that we have right now between my wife and I was one that she, the person brought up was basically the traffic over by Center Street. There is a lot of accidents. There you can still step on the broken glass. It's not even safe to like walk over there. My wife doesn't actually want me to walk across there even though I'm a hiker. And then also that interchange right there on the corner. A lot of the people who take a left-hand turn traveling uh, south and then they turn left or go along Center Street. They do not frequently do not pause for pedestrians. So anybody that's living in that parking complex, if they actually try to walk to the park and they go around the right side, it was the left side, they have a higher chance of getting hit by a car. I say that because my wife has been numerous times almost hit and myself as well when we go to Utah Park. So more or less it's just that if we, if that happens, I would imagine that that park or that parking light is actually going to need to be upgraded or just fixed so that it's a safer place. I, since it's not including the south side, I don't have any more concerns. The north side, it's just a playful trucks part. So that's all. Thank you.
Just to clarify, Mr. Ardmore, the place where the trucks park is actually a lot in between the houses and Mr. Turley's property, right? It it seems like it's not in the the maps.
So, right there, yeah.
That was the map.
It is the property that we're talking about, where the trucks park.
Okay. It doesn't overlap and go to beyond that? It includes all of where the trucks park?
Yeah, if we bring it up one more time.
I thought, I thought I saw it go to the left a little bit as well. To the west, to be clear, as what left was.
No, that's, so that's a separate residential property to the west.
Thank you.
As as you go south on on the Turley property, it does expand towards the west, it gets wider.
It just the one on Center Street.
Where the trees and stuff that he was talking about.
Thank you. That's the picture. Yep, five seconds, go.
So that's also in the thirty-year flood zone. Just be aware of that.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, I saw someone else that wanted to comment. Come up and tell us your name and where you live. Wait till you get to the mic.
My name is Frank Gilbert. I live at forty ninety West Center Street. And I drive this road here every day and, you know, there's nothing for, you know, like eating except for Subway, you know, and the other place he mentioned, which I don't like anyway, so. But, I mean, there, there's just nothing down there for us. You know, we, we drive this road down, we go to seven eleven, get our gas and then head out into the city to do our stuff. But, you know, I would, I'd love to see more there, you know, love to see more development there to, you know, get more stores in and, you know, get, make it more convenient. You know, with not, you know, all this vacancy there, there's just not enough for people that, you know, we live all the way at the end down there and, you know, we've got a long way to travel to, you know, get to anything. And so I would feel like the development would help us out. And, you know, that's it for me. Thank you.
Do we have any other neighbor comments? Come on out.
I'm Becky Gilbert, his wife. And I also live at forty ninety West Center Street. And I think that we need more development down there also. I think that the, this would make a great way to get people there, get businesses going through there. Like you said, it takes, we have to go all the way up just to get a burger or something. And I really think that this would be a great idea. And I, I hope you really, I hope you approve it because I think it's great. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Dave Lewis, I live right by the new Provo High School. Can you pull the elevations, the three different elevations up and then pull up the general plan? So she's pulling those up. I just wanted to highlight.
I don't think she has the ones that Mr. Curly should.
So he had the seventy, the sixty, and I like the middle building where the three stories is closer to Center Street. So as you go further south, the density goes down. I think the buildings look nice. I think it'll add to the amenity. Can you add, can you pull up the general plan? So yeah, that one's fine. Okay, it's a blue dot. It's really not showing up very well, but I like, so I just live a couple of blocks to the north. And I like that, I I would agree, this is a risk on the developer's part. But I agree that it's critical mass. And so I like his idea because we've been waiting for years for Smith's. But I think it's going to take some other development in that area. I see the blue, that is the fire station. I don't like the idea further to the right. Yep, that that's the fire station. I really don't like the idea of single family homes on that road. I don't think that's the future of that area. I like how there's some density right around there, and so I'd like to see that improved. I like how the road on one thirty south is going to come off of Geneva Road, just a little bit south of that. But right there, I, and I think that there's been a lot of anecdotal evidence, comments, but Mr. Turley's brought in facts and hey, here is your document saying here how many rentals. That may or may not be the case, actually, but that's the city document, right? So I like the development. I like that. I agree that there needs to be some critical mass. I support the sixty units. I like how it's going to have the road coming in off of one thirty and oh, I get two minutes now?
No, I think that there's probably not much time left.
So I, I think that for me, I'd rather, I'd rather go more closely to services that I need. But I think it's going to take doing something like this to draw, to be the critical mass, to, to be the magnet, to bring them in. Sad to see Wendy's leave, love to see them come back, don't think they will, but yeah, there's my.
Thank you. Any other neighborhood comments?
So it's Andrew Lewis, and I am born and raised in Provo. So I'm still, even though I'm part of the development group for this project, I also live here, so I'd like to make my comment. Is there any way we could pull up the southwest area plan? It's something you just recently approved, like two or three city council meetings ago? I'd actually, if we could pull up, if you leave that, just go to the actual document, that'd be very helpful. It's
The best one?
No, it's not the map. It's just um, it talks about what this area specifically is supposed to be. It says that this area is supposed to be a major activity core for all of those areas. All the neighborhoods are supposed to meet here and have their main commercial activity right there. I mean, if you're considering giving up this commercial right here, you'd have to consider about all the other little neighborhood commercial nodes that you have shown. If this isn't going to work, surely those will not as well. And then I guess lastly, I'd like to point out that it does say right there at the beginning of the area plan that it says the boundaries should shift depending on what comes in just to meet the specific requirements of each development. It's very clear right there. I thanks, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other neighborhood comments?
Hello, my name is Michael Mitchell. I am a student at, in the area and I live about a mile and a half away from here. Just a couple of things that I noticed throughout the presentation was my, my main concern is that the proposed plan is quite ambiguous. He says, you know, that he presented a seventy, seventy unit plan, and then that will be reduced to sixty. And then there was talk about increasing the number of floors in these buildings and how that is a possibility and there's space for that. I think with that ambiguity, it would need to be defined pretty clearly what that density would be. A couple of different things along that line, the the number of parking spaces. Provo is notorious for having parking issues and being under parked. And I think that even at one and a half cars per unit, which is very low, that ninety-six parking spaces would only leave six for the commercial parking. If everybody were to return home and maybe on a weekend stay there. Also, kind of for the commercial property, I think that it's important to acknowledge Wendy's going out of business, but also notice that bringing this density would increase the ability for something like Wendy's to continue to make money and to exist. In the construction of something like this, it is a bit of a risk because there are a limited number of commercial units available. But as those other corners of this intersection get built out and have more commercial units, that would increase the draw of other people and help to make it a viable place to have these commercial properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, we will close public comment. I see Mr. Maury wants to have his turn at the podium.
Can I make a comment? I'm not a, I am a Provo resident, not a west side.
Tell us who you are, so everyone knows who's talking.
I'm Keith Maury. I'm the Economic Development Director for Provo City. I just want to make a couple of comments that seem relevant to me as far as this discussion is concerned. First of all, it's a zone change request. So, I mean, the city has no obligation to approve the zone change unless there's some compelling reason why we think we should, right? And so I think that's one of the concerns staff had was that the, the information that was presented to us was a little bit ambiguous and confusing. And there wasn't really a compelling reason why we, which, why we should shift from what the future land use map, the current zoning designated as what we wanted in that area. There's been a lot of thought that's been put into those plans, a lot of public input, a lot of discussion about what was right and what was helpful for the future of that neighborhood. And so I think there's a high sensitivity to making sure that we don't vary from that unless there's a compelling reason to. So I think that's one of those, one of the reasons why you found staff making the recommendations that they did. There is, I think the future land use map, the current zoning does suggest that there's some higher density right there at the intersection, but that it very quickly steps down so that it's more in line with the single-family neighborhoods that are to the south and in the adjoining area. And I'll tell you, from an economic development perspective, we're still working very aggressively with potential grocers for the west side to try to solve that problem. And one of the big gaps that they're experiencing, there's two. One is the number of rooftops in the area. And the second thing is the average household income in the area. And so from my perspective, as we try to look towards how are we going to solve that, it really is going to take a significant amount of single-family homes that are higher value, that have the potential to bring higher income people into that area to bring the the kind of disposable income into that area that retailers need to support their retail establishments. And until that happens, I think anybody that's looking at a retail establishment on the west side is going to think twice about is there the population base or the disposable income base to justify their, their being in that location? We all acknowledge that we, we think that there's a gap, there needs to be some of that development take place. But I think there's just some critical things that are going to have to happen first before we see retailers standing in line to make that happen. So I don't know if that's helpful. If you have any questions for me?
How do we, I have a question for you. How do we legislate when something meets the intent of the plan in some ways like this? The bubble clearly shows we want commercial, we want mixed use. We've talked about that before. How do we say, yeah, this is falls in that, but it's not what we were hoping for? You know, I mean,
Well, you
Is that where the compelling for the zone change comes in?
Like, exactly. I mean, the the zone change is, to me, is the trigger. If it was zoned for that use and they presented a plan that met the zoning requirements, you'd probably have some accountability to approve the plan if it met the city requirements. Because they're asking for a zone change, we have a lot of discretion to determine, well, do we want to or do we not? And really, that you don't have to have a compelling reason to do it if you don't want to. Does that make sense? I mean, unless, unless they've been able to present something that persuades you that there's a reason to shift the vision that was established sometime in the past, you're not obligated to make that change. We set that standard for a reason.
Thank you. Mr. Pepperoni?
Just add to that a couple of points. One is that the current zoning is R one eight, and current zoning always trumps a master plan document or general plan document. The general plan would certainly suggest that we would like to see a mixed-use commercial node at that corner. But to me, that means one building that meets the requirements of the mixed-use zone. I'm very frustrated with the traffic studies we've been getting, regardless of who they've done by, who they've been done by, that have told us we're not going to have spillover parking. I don't doubt that Mr. Turley can look out of his office and see a vacant parking lot in the middle of the day. But I send the parking, parking enforcement people out to take counts at two and three and four o'clock in the morning when the most people are are at home. And we're experiencing spillover parking in almost every project. We've been told we won't have spillover parking. So to me, if it's not fully parked, I'm really hesitant about an MDRs, a, a, a mixed-use zone there. If you do both parcels, both buildings, you're going to have a residential street connecting into this project. You're going to end up with spillover parking into that neighborhood to the west. Mr. Turley is absolutely correct that the lines on the map were drawn to ebb and flow. And he was quoting me with those statements that he read. His memory is good or his research is good. But in my opinion, we have been approving nine multifamily units in the city for every one single-family lot for the last five to seven years. Why we would expand one of those nodes for more multifamily at the expense of single-family doesn't, makes me really question that.
Question, why would someone want a single-family home on a, on that busy of a street?
I was thinking the same thing, right across from the fire department.
Buy a home on that street.
Because how it has to be designed is you can't have driveways on it. There's got to be an alley behind it. So you're going to have front yards and the street that the house fronting out on top with the driveway being back, so we don't have all those curb cuts and things. So it's still, it's still in a busy street. That's right. But I can tell you that there's a much larger development just to the south of this on the future Geneva Road on twenty fifty, and they're designing it exactly that way. Single family along what, on the road with the Single family along what, on, on the road with the alley and back and driveways and back. To me, it's again, that balance between single family and multifamily and what are we trying to achieve in, in the city? I was just meeting with the Utah Valley Home Builders Association yesterday and they were chiding me at how few single family building permits the city has been issuing in the last few years. And I said, yeah, you're right. We need to do something about that. Have you seen how many multifamily we've been approving? And she said, yeah, you guys are right up there with me. You know, um, to me, we need to get that balance back somehow. We need to try to try to bring that balance back.
Miss, oh, I've got a question too. Uh, the plan that has been approved that wouldn't require any, any changes, the alternate plan. Does that show mixed use on the corner on that first acre?
No, it's all single family.
All single family.
But that's current zoning and current zoning trumps any plan.
But in order to get any mixed use on that first acre, we'd have to re.
Yeah, and I think the first acre would be fine if it meets all the requirements of the zone, including full parking.
I, I, I had a this kind of tangent, potential, but I, maybe we could do this in a um, our five o'clock meeting, the, um, but I'd be curious to hear about some of these projects that have had spillover in those, those two AM, three AM traffic counts. Um, because we hear about it a lot. And I, I know they exist, but it would, for me, it's really helpful to have concrete examples of that.
To ask those questions. So I've been getting counts made and we can give you data. So we'd be, we'd be happy to do that.
In the study session, that's what it's called. Yeah.
Okay. Um, public comment is closed, as I already said, and this is a time when commissioners, we talk about our thoughts and our concerns and our things that we like and don't like. Someone want to go first?
I'll go first.
Mr. Knutson.
If we were talking about the old.
Is your microphone on?
Yes, it's on.
Okay.
If we were talking about the alternative plan, I would be happy. And she said, why would anybody want to live on that street? I live on Center Street. A lovely place to live, even though it's a busy street. Uh, I, I would not hesitate at all to have a home along there. Uh, I would feel much better if we were talking about just the one building, the first building on the north that has the uh, ground floor for expansion of businesses. I would be all in favor of that. But the second building, I'm not in favor of. I think it makes the area too dense. And uh, to me, we should be building the, the single family uh, homes along that street.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Ms. Kendall?
I would have to agree. I think that we do want that mixed use and um, that first acre is prime for that. The second acre actually right across from it is single family homes. So you're actually extending, these are all single family homes across from that second acre. None?
I think the one in blue is a fire station.
Right, but the yellow is the second acre, no?
No, the, the pink area that's below the bubble is the second acre.
Got it. So we've got the fire station and then the single family homes. So what is the yellow? That is the Mr. Pepperoni, is that what you were talking about, about the other development?
So the, the yellow on the west side of twenty fifty west is what would remain R one eight and he doesn't have a, a concept plan for that at all. At this time.
Do you own that same property?
It's all one property right now.
He just hasn't given us a concept plan because he's not asking for a rezone of that parcel.
Correct.
Okay, but you own that property too. Okay, that's why it's included. Okay. So we have the fire station, but then right behind it is single family, correct? On the other side of, of.
Yes, the neighborhood to the east and south of the fire station.
Yes, single family, right.
To restate what you just said, Ms. Kendall, you're saying that that sort of seems to be a natural boundary for where the single family starts?
It does to me. Yeah, because to the other side of the second acre, that is single family, correct?
It is currently zon- yes, behind it on the west.
Behind it on the west, right.
Off of twenty-one, twenty west.
Yeah, so I feel like you're just creating this little channel now that kind of sinks in between. You have the fire station, but a fire station is just a whole different beast. It's not a lot of in and outs. It's not public, it's all different, you know, um, there's a fire station tucked in amongst homes in um, uh, in the, in um, Edgemont area. Edgemont, yeah. And that, it, you don't even hardly know it's there. So I just feel like it's a natural boundary, that first acre. Feels right to me. And I really appreciate the concept of protecting the ability to have single family homes. And if you want a grocery store, you need two factors, not just rooftops, but more um, higher income. And there's already two thousand units slated to go in that would be the, the higher density. I just, I agree, we need to protect that. There has to be a return to balance. Provo City has for a long time carried the burden of the county for rental properties. And we've been creating more and more uh, that are not single family dwellings, so.
I appreciate that you still pointed out that the corner is ideal and was included in the general plan as that because as much as it would be lovely to have single family homes everywhere, we can't squeeze out commercial either. Or squeeze out ideal commercial locations at the expense. Okay, Mr. Whitlock.
I, I had a question for uh, Mr. Dave from Public Works. There was a comment made about sewage and I didn't see anything about that in the staff report. Is that a concern from a public works at all about this project? No, okay.
I think the comment was in relation to the thing we've talked about a lot on the west side where there's a limit to the number of units that the sewer system can sustain. And so that always comes up in just an aside.
Yeah, and I just want to know if it was pertinent to this particular project.
I should probably come to the microphone, right? Uh, David Day with Public Works, uh, don't let that influence your decision on this. I think the, the sewer and water issue is far below what, what you're contemplating here. So just don't let that even influence you.
I have a question with, since you're at the mic. Um, seventy south, that's on the north side of the fire station property. Um, is that too close to the intersection on Center Street to have a, a light or something there for to have access to that commercial property as proposed? On the west side? Like, could there be a three-way?
Access across that, yeah.
That just seems like a more logical access point than having miscellaneous driveways throughout. So I was wondering what, how that had been sent in and planned to you.
That would be a good location for a driveway.
Okay.
Um, so just to share some.
Thank you, Mr. Day.
Sorry, thank you. Appreciate it. So just to share some thoughts, um, what I, what I agree with the staff report on is the parking point. I think it's, you know, we have those rules for a reason and it seems like this is asking for a, an exemption from the standard. Is that, that's correct of for what would be required for the number of units? So I, I do have a concern with that. Um, what I, what I would share kind of contrary to that, a, a little bit of a different point of view is I feel like this, the general, uh, again, it's not current zoning, I understand that, but the, the, the general plan does kind of intend for that corner almost more than half of the property to be mixed use. And you have a developer that's saying, I want to build mixed use on this property. But for it to make sense for me economically and for various number of reasons, I just need the property I only own to extend that blob a tiny bit. And I, I just don't see how that's a ma- like a, to me, it seems like it's in line with the idea of the master plan and what is trying to be accomplished there. I really do. I also think that there's some assumptions being made about um, renters and especially in a nice development like this, not being high income enough to have disposable income. You know, I rented until three years ago and I had a lot of disposable income that I spent on restaurants and, you know, retail. And I, I think it's a generational assumption in some, in some ways. I think a lot of millennials and um, Gen Z are, you know, they rent and they spend money. And, and they're maybe a little slower to buy homes than earlier generations. So I just want to be careful about some of the assumptions we're making. I do have, I do agree though that um, to me, I think it's less of an issue of single family, multifamily and more of an issue of equity versus non-equity. I am concerned with, you know, not people in the community not owning, owning their homes and therefore having less of an incentive to stay invested. And that is a big concern. I think with Provo generally, we don't have, we're having fewer and fewer, a higher and higher percentage of people renting. So I, I do think that is a concern, but I think it oftentimes gets conflated with single family and multifamily. Now, I know that if you look at the data, there tends to be a higher percent of ownership in single family as opposed to multifamily, but that's because it's, that's typically what's offered. There's fewer multifamily units offered for sale. But I just think that that is also a, a trend that is changing with younger demographics and as our popu- essentially of the cost of living in our community goes up, uh, starter fa- starter homes for young families will need to be multifamily for them to be affordable. So those are some thoughts I'd like to share.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, I, I wanted to clarify some of my feelings around the, I, I, my understanding of the bubble general plan nodes was that, that they were nebulous on purpose. Um, that something could go outside of the, break those bounds and, and, uh, otherwise they would have, would have been like the old way where it's parcel by parcel etched out what's what. Um, another thing is uh, like, at, at this point, I'm can, I'm, I'm leaning towards a, a continuance perhaps to address uh, parking issues and uh, and I, and the, the rooftop amenities, I would need a, it would need to be part for me, like it would need to be a part of a, a development agreement or part of the concept plans in the middle. Because I, I don't feel comfortable doing all that type of um, uh, that, that type of density without having um, amenities for the residents on. And as I understood, the plan showed rooftop amenities on one building and not the other. That's a concern too, like why, what's, you know, the, the other residents have to go across this, the, the development to access amenities. Um, you know, that's a concern for me too. Um, so at this point, like, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend an approval. Um, the city council.
Any other commissioners have just items you want to discuss? Mr. South?
So, uh, like, i- i- it's going to be a little bit of an agreement to a lot of the points that have already been made, but I do feel it's important that we stay with the area plans. The new area plan, as I've read it, is talking about that specific area. Um, or localized retail and office uses in interior areas right here at this uh, mixed use area, also talking about uh, uh, distinctive design features, which we've talked about, mix of retail, office, residential uses. Uh, we've talked about um, single family, multifamily, and we haven't heard much about transitioning there. That's, that is something that I think is a little bit important if we just row out, you know, sixty, seventy units and then, and then we've got our single family. Uh, that's, that's a little bit of a concern, but point is, is we do have these general plans. There is a lot of great information here that needs to be reliable for developers who are taking risks. Um, I, I mean, I think there's a lot of, a lot of good things that are being said here. I do think the parking is kind of a hard stop there. Uh, as Mr. Whitlock said, I mean, this is, they're, they're there for a reason. Um, and that's also, we, we need to be consistent along those lines, but it feels like there's a, there's a lot of really great things. It's just, it feels like it's not fully baked for me.
If I could go back also, uh, it seems to me also the biggest impediment to single family homes in Provo is, is uh, the lack of developable land, which which for us right now is um, agricultural land. Um, and there aren't exactly giant, there, there are giant swaths of that, but they're not necessarily available for development at this point. So I'm, we're, Provo's unique in Utah County for having very little uh, developable land. So the, yeah, the um, I would love to see, well, I don't know, other people wouldn't, but it would, it'd be nice to see some of those un- underutilized agricultural areas open to single family homes, but that's not even, that's not even on the table. It's not even something we could consider because it's, it's just not available.
Ms. Wallen?
I have a lot of thought, but I just don't see single family homes being in that, that area. I, I feel Mr. Shirley's done a good job at describing what his plans are. And I used to live on one hundred North in Provo when I was a, at BYU for several years. I loved it down there. I, I think those apartments would get filled. And I think it would, it, what he said, kickstart other people wanting to develop there. And right now it's just sitting there. Nothing's getting developed. We talk about University Avenue, um, you know, going up the canyon, how they want to build, you know, apartments for people who are leaving to go out to Lehigh. I, I don't see how this is any different. Um, I, I, you know, I drive to the airport, Provo Airport, and I drive past this and it just, it's underdeveloped. It needs to, you know, it needs some um, just needs someone to start the development. So, I, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't buy a house there. So.
Thank you. Okay.
Especially with a three-story uh, mixed use development right next to it, two, two houses. That's, that to me is why it's like I, we're talking about a tiny piece of the land and I, the, the parking concern is a legitimate concern and I do agree with what you said. It feels a little half-baked. Like I'd like to see some of these things fully worked out before I would, but like the idea, I like it and like a developer wants to do it. So I don't know. It's like a lot of the concerns that you hear from the pro- from the west side residents, which are real concerns are just because there's not enough money going out there.
Thank you. Um, I would just like to wrap it, add to this um, with, as much as I would love to see lots of single family homes, just like other advocates of that. Um, the R one eight plan, if it came forward, also doesn't honor the general plan objectives. So um, I'm opposed to that because that's, doesn't make any more sense than making the whole thing commercial. Um, like Mr. Gonzalez, I don't actually have a big problem with the um, the mixed use going down as far as it does. But like Mr. South said, I do think that if we're going to allow for that, um, it would need to have some sort of transition. So perhaps the whole thing could be rezoned, but but the concept plan that went along with that wouldn't have as many units crammed into that parcel on the south as, as possible. The, and by that I mean the one between, what is it, one thirty south and seventy south? I feel like that should be the transition zone if we were, if I were to be comfortable with the change. I don't have a problem with commercial on the north end. I don't have a problem with the three-story housing even on the north end because this is a major intersection in Provo and that's exactly why the elusive blob has been placed there. So I feel like that does honor the general plan. I know that there's concerns um, with transportation options and accidents and pedestrian safety, but I feel like um, public works will, will take that into account and they will require an upgrade of the intersection and there'll be a left turn light instead of one that runs over pedestrians. Um, I would not be okay with a parking reduction. I have always been an advocate for fully parking because I live in a neighborhood where it spills out all the time. So I um, just because thirty units per acre would be allowed by the proposed zoning does not mean that it needs to be built to thirty units per acre if there's not enough room for the parking. Um, I too agree that this would jumpstart development. And if we've been waiting and waiting for commercial and someone's willing to put in some neighborhood commercial uses, I would, I would welcome that. Um, I worry about the vagueness of it. And so I think based on some of the comments we've heard, I think that all of us would be open to looking into this again. Um, I feel like, except for maybe Mr. Knutson, whose heart is a little bit different. Um, or ex- your experience is different than ours. I think all of us would be somewhat comfortable with that first acre being commercial or mixed use. So I think that's worthy of another discussion. Um, and but I don't think that this project as presented tonight would be something that any of us would, would be okay with. So that's me summing up what I think I heard. So do we want to chime in on what we think we want to do next as far as what action we want to take tonight?
So I'm not sure a continuance would be helpful here. I mean, I think there needs to be some reworking. Hopefully this discussion is uh, is helpful to the developer um, and, and positive in the sense of this is, and it's been a long time. It's been almost a year now since it came forward, but you know, depending on what the momentum is, you know, this is good information. If it can be used, then great, but I don't think continuing is necessary. I mean, I think we've got some hard barriers and.
So, Mr. Ardmore, in, in answer to that, would it be more appropriate for us to continue and say, come back with what's essentially a completely different plan or to deny it and then say? Or to deny it and then say, come back with a different plan based on what we've given? What's the most correct?
If you deny it, they have to cancel these applications, start all over with new applications. If that's not what you intend for them to do, continuance gives them the opportunity to refine, revise.
And boundaries can be moved as far as what they're asking for.
They can, they can totally change the concepts, the zone boundaries, whatever they want to change before they come before you again, if you continue it. So those are both options.
Does that change your statement a little bit? Okay. Anyone else? Based on what Mr. South just said, do we want to refine what our thoughts are?
Personally.
Well, just to be clear, if we do continue, we we should give them a really good list of what, what we expect to be.
When we continue something, we need to present findings, like the reason we're not going to deny, we're not going to deny or approve recommend for denial or recommend for approval is is because of this. And you can't come back essentially till you can meet those.
Right. I just would ask that you be specific so that they mean so that we don't waste their time or staff's time. So if you're gonna, if you're gonna continue it, you want that, you want it to come back with these issues addressed or these changes made or these specific things done or whatever.
Okay, commissioners, if we think that we like the idea of continuance, then let me hear what we need to have before we hear it again.
I would need a development agreement for for rooftop amenities. And it would need to appear in the, in the concept plan, a floor plan of the rooftop amenities.
Is, is a development agreement too soon with a concept plan?
It would be tied to the rezone, not the concept plan.
Okay.
Okay. But yeah, we're hearing both.
Mr. Ardmore, does the plan as proposed currently have the correct percentage of open space and amenities that is required in that zone?
Uh, based on the square footages that they've presented, yes, it meets the ten percent.
And does that include the the area of the rooftop proposal or is that just the?
That is, that is the amenity package. It's the rooftop, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I'd probably also recommend the number of units to be clarified. Um, it sounds like some of the commissioners would be inclined to go less than sixty to to somewhere like thirty or forty or fifty, but so- something less than sixty, right? So we might want to consider that as well. Too, too, too dense. There, I think there are, there are at least a couple commissioners that felt that.
Parking is one thing, but the other thing I would say is that one of the concerns was that there didn't seem to be any transition between the high density and the low density. So I don't think that the overall sixty units for me is a big problem. It's that maybe I'd like them to be heavier on the north side. So forty units to twenty and then to single family, so that the ones on the south are not as dense. Is that, we're not saying get rid of all the units. We're saying redistribute them, I think.
Yeah, that's another alternative.
Uh, redistribution is a really good point, plus making sure you meet parking, the parking requirement.
So we're saying no parking reduction.
Other, other than the one MU already allows?
Okay, I wrote down, I I think I expressed this, but I wrote down a plan that steps down the density or redistributes it. To create more to, more of a transition. Okay, I have four things. A development agreement tied to the rezone for amenity space, the number of units to be clarified, I would even say solidified. Because I know it's just a concept plan, but I'd really like to know where each of the two bedroom, three bedroom, one bedroom is proposed. A plan that steps down the density to create more of a transition. And then no parking reduction other than allowed by the MU zone. What else have we? If if you rezoned the whole two acres, it would all be entitled to get the MU zone. So the highest or most intense use is on the north end of the property. Do we need the developer to present more specific commercial thoughts? I like what he's presented, but I mean, I don't know that approving, denying locks anyone into that anyway. Would we be comfortable with the whole gamut of what's allowed? Because just because we think a nice dentist office would be lovely there and maybe a burger shop, but.
Reality is it needs to be able to change as things do change. If this does kickstart development, as we would all hope, in five years, that would change.
But we don't care what goes there. That's just a gamble, a business gamble. Yep. Okay, is that useful? Okay, um, my understanding is that since the concept plan is tied in with the rezone, if we're leaning toward this, we would continue both? All right, that is the, how this might look. Um, and now we just need someone to say it.
Uh, there's one other clarification I'd probably make and that would be a discussion with Public Works about where if if
Access points?
Access point, what would there be one at seventy south or at one thirty or both? What makes the most sense?
Because as you were saying that, I actually like having the street come out at one thirty. But I almost would like to have whatever's north of one thirty. If it's, if if it all gets rezoned and it's all high density, I would almost rather that not have an outlet there. I don't know if that's even legal. Because I would only leave one outlet on seventy south, but.
And and the other thing, I I mean, if like from a commercial perspective, I would, I would want an outlet there because I want
The neighborhood to get in there.
Quick access to the business.
Mr. Ardmore.
As engineering looks at it, they base number of ingress egress on vehicle trips. Um, so that's something they'd have to analyze. If it goes above a certain number, they would require two access.
Okay.
So.
So discussion with Public Works about where the outlets would be is all we need to ask.
Would that not happen?
Impplied anyway.
Would that not happen anyway, though?
It truly would. It truly would. On a concept plan, sometimes it doesn't get down to that detail, but we can verify that for.
I would just like it to be considered at least, since we do have a fire station there and we've, we're talking about maybe two adjacent different uses. It would be nice to talk about it first. Okay. Yes.
And I very much appreciate this dialogue. This is fabulous. This is, this is, this is the kind of guidance that helps us curtail time and 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 money and and really deliver to the city what it wants. Do you clear, do you care about the clock tower? I I it's silly, but but your input on the exterior is is really important. If if you were to say, we really want that that facade to be like that third one on the bottom or something like that, that helps us to guide our architect to be able to get the kind of product that you want. We wanted to put that, that, that forty-five degree angle on the side of the building so it would front that intersection. And we wanted there to be some kind of presence. We really wanted to put some kind of a, a, a sign out there so that, so that you could announce neighborhood events, so that we could, we could cheer on uh, the, the, the Provo High, you know, different teams, that kind of thing. That that was, that was, that that kind of guidance is helpful to us. And then also the that thing that I forgot, and I'll have to guess on that, whatever that one is.
Um, in answer to your question, I'll, I'll answer first and someone can correct me if they feel differently. I would say, as much as a clock tower sounds like a lovely architectural feature, if it's not currently allowed by the sign code, I would say plan your your facade without it and plan something that is allowed that will still contribute to the community. That would be my personal.
The clock tower is, it was if you added a component of of some kind of reader board. And and the reader board, not the clock, the clock, yes. But it was the feature of the night building that we just thought would be a good. Because because the other thing the general plan talks about is is making a real statement about what we want that, that village commercial to look like. And we thought, well, if if we're, if we're the first knuckleheads that want to try this thing, let's do it right. Let's, let's, let's try to make it, whether it's a Fort Utah theme or a West Provo agricultural theme or kind of this something else theme, tell us what it is, we'll incorporate it, and then you guys can beat up the next guy to make them look like us.
I feel like the sign code probably has plenty of options that would be really cool and still allow you to do that. So that would be my, my gut on that one. Does anyone feel differently?
There's one, there's one statement here in the Southwest area plan that I think is a little instructive, not very specific, but it does say attractive side amenities and distinctive design features. And it's referring specifically to that Village Center mixed use area. So that's all that we get. Uh, and I don't know if it's our role to try to play design, design there, but I love the concepts. And I don't know whose job that is, but.
Isn't there a design review that that a project of this size would go through also? So that would be addressed at that point. Um, your other question was, which are the facades? And I think our, I think our discussion about what things we want you to come back with hopefully encapsulate that for you, that we like the idea of the higher density on the north and stepping it down as you went south. So if that may be the one in the, in the middle of your three options, height wise was more what we were thinking of. Did I misrepresent anyone in that restatement? Okay, all right. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to continue item number one. Steve Turley request, thank you, requests a zone change from the R one point eight zone to the MU zone for approximately two acres of land located at twenty seventy-five West Center Street, Provo Bay neighborhood. During this period of continuance, we recommend a development agreement be created tying the rezone for amenity space. Uh, second, that the number of units become clearly solidified. Third, a plan that steps down density or redistributes density to create more of a transition with the higher density being on the north end of the parcel. Fourth, no parking reduction other than what's allowed by the mixed use zone. Fifth, the highest and most intense use on the north end. And sixth, a discussion with Public Works about where outlets ingress egress should be.
Any discussion on the motion by Mr. Gonzalez? Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. South has seconded the motion. Okay, I think maybe we were supposed to have discussion after the second. It's been too long since we've met. We're okay. All right, um, we will start with Mr. Whitlock. We are voting on item number one. The motion is to continue it based on those six things we're hoping to get back.
Aye.
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 Okay, all seven of us have voted to continue. All right, we've got item number two that we need to vote on. Do we have a motion for item number two?
Yeah, I'll move to continue item number two. Steve Turley requests concept plan approval for a mixed use development with apartments and commercial use in a proposed MU zone over two acres of land located at twenty seventy-five West Center Street, Provo Bay neighborhood. Uh, along with the recommendations that the six items referenced in the first item also be addressed.
We probably don't need to restate that for this because he said those are linked to the zone request, zone change request. So basically bring a concept plan back that reflects what you're asking for in item one, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. South seconded that one as well. Do we have any discussion on the motion or the stated? Okay, Mr. Whitlock.
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you for spending your evening with us tonight. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Mr. Gonzalez is hot tonight, second by Mr. Knutson. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.